Of course, when you have a microphone, you always have to say something, right? And something talking to you, each one of you that are here. This, this opportunity for the Interfaith Council to unite in serving the community to make it better. Because if you have a faith and it doesn't matter if it's 10th faith or 15th faith, what happens, the people that are serving and living their faith are looking upward and not just at each other. And we see that in the community. And with the Interfaith Council, we've got 22 or 24 churches that meet once a month. We help each other out. We do the, you know, the walk of the ways of the cross. And we do everything with support each other because we want them to know that we're here as brothers and sisters and we love each other. So what we would like to do with our prayer today is a prayer focused on you and what we believe you are to this community. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so grateful to be in this community where people care for each other, that we are educated and we grow and we believe in each other's plans and visions. And with this particular group, Father, we pray that they will know that the community is behind them, that we will support them, we'll pray for them, that they'll have the wisdom and the insight when they need it. Where their busy men sometimes are praying for them will help meet the needs that have to be met. Thanks again for good people in our community. We are grateful for you bringing good people to our community and allowing us to be friends with them. We pray for the wisdom in this and also for the health and strength of their families and the goodwill of everyone in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Today, our pledge allegiance will be given by Cadet Gilman with the Dixie High School's school junior ROTC.
Everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Today, our first item is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commissioner for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-abatible motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve auditor-approved claims for payment for April 4th, 2018 through April 17th, 2017, approval of commission regular minutes of March 20th, 2018, and April 3rd, 2018, and work meeting of April 4th, 2018, approval of administrative adjustments of real property, approval of administrative adjustments of personal property, approval of applicants for property tax abatements, approval for application for settlements or deferrals of property tax, approval of amendment to beer tax fund, tax fiscal year 2018, reporting period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, approval of amended 2018 consulting agreement with Wendy Sandberg for the Washington County Fair, approval and acceptance of the Ameren Valley Heights subdivision amended plat, approval of public defender contract with Lamar Winward.
I would second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Okay, first item on our agenda is consideration of purchase request by Ray Boyer.
Okay, the first couple are for tourism and sports and outdoor recreation. Uh, the first one is for golf advertising, which is a total of $55,500. The second one is a TV, social, and audio monthly campaign in a total of $25,650. And then the next few are for the sheriff's office. The first one is for a blanket PO for commensary items in a total of $40,000. The next one is a blanket PO for culinary items, which is in a total of $30,000. And then the final one is for an 18-month lease on a diesel truck for the bomb squad. And on this one, it doesn't hit the $10,000, but we want it, but it is in addition to other vehicles we have on a fleet already, so they wanted to go through mission meeting to add that. And, um, it's for a Ford F-350 to replace the existing bomb squad truck. Old truck will be traded in, um, with remaining retired vehicles. And this lease here, this $3,000 lease, is to get this leased vehicle on the same cycle as all the other leased vehicles, so it's a little bit less than usual. And unless there's any questions, that is all.
Sheriff, uh, on this additional, is this an additional vehicle for a while and then the truck bomb squad has will be turned in, or how's this impacting our overall fleet number?
Yeah, we're gonna take that 2,000 Ford that we currently have. And it's got low miles on it, but it is 14 years old. The last two times that we've actually responded out of county, calls that's broken down on us, the last one was several thousand dollars in repairs, um, get the thing fixed and brought back from Cedar City. We're looking at the lease vehicle because this bomb truck, it's always hooked up to the trailer with all the equipment plugged into power. So when that call comes, they just jump and go. It averages about four to five thousand miles per year. We figured the lease option for the 18-month would be a little bit cheaper for us and then we don't have to worry about the maintenance, the response.
You know, I would like to think that we don't have a need for a bomb truck and trailer to be hooked up and ready to go on a moment's notice, but unfortunately, uh, unspeakable, unthinkable.
Um, if you remember clear back in 2004, this is one of the vehicles that was purchased through the region, my niece. And, uh, one of our bomb guys is actually sitting here with us. If you have any further questions. I think you were on that last one when the truck broke down on you, didn't it?
Uh, yes. Now, I'm just thinking of the bomb we had at our high school. And it underscores the need for that, for us to have a resource like that. It just breaks my heart that we have to have, have bomb, now that this is even in the discussion anymore, but I guess we live in that world, don't we?
But we're, we are going from a county-owned vehicle, it's 14 years old, to doing the lease, that will then go through the regular ones.
Do you think over the long haul, this would be less expensive than having a truck and holding it for 14 years?
Uh, the maintenance costs on that truck are, um, I think there's like a $6,000 adjustment currently, which should cover another three years' worth of leases, just in repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so for the questions I would make, plus, do you have any? Anybody else have questions?
No.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase requisitions as presented by the clerk auditors off, Ray. Thank you.
And I'll second that motion. Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number two is a presentation for the 2018 presentation of pill payment from the Division of Wildlife Resources. And Kevin Bunnell is here this evening. Thank you.
Good to see you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I think usually people come here to ask us for money, so anytime the roles are reversed, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. As mentioned, my name's Kevin Bunnell. I'm the regional supervisor for the Division Wildlife Resources. I also have Rick Frydale here with me, who's our, my manager over our Washington County field office over at Quell Creek. And I'm here to present, um, the pill payment for the lands that the Division of Wildlife owns in Washington County. It doesn't amount to a whole lot. It's $117.91, so be careful where you spend it. It won't, it won't lease a bomb truck for you, but we're grateful for the relationship that we have with, with Washington County. And while I'm here, are there any questions or concerns or, or any issues that we can address together?
Only comment I would make is we sure appreciate a great working relationship with the Department of Natural Resources, Wildlife Resources, and, and Rick has been here for, I'm thinking, almost 30 years, and, and we've really appreciated the opportunity to work with him over the many years with our HCP and other threatened endangered species.
Well, thank you, commissioners. I know that's certainly unusual, so we really do cherish our relationships, so thank you. Okay, I do have, um, something I need to have signed here by Commissioner Rensstrom, that you've received the check. If there's nothing else, I'll bring that up to you and then we'll be done for the day.
Great, thank you.
I did leave one of my cards with the, the letter and the check, just in case you ever need to get ahold of me.
Eric, do we need any recognition or motion for the chairman to sign the document, or we're good?
Not to recite. We don't, we don't have too many rules about people wanting to give the county money.
Thank you. We watch our nickels and dimes around here pretty closely, so 100 bucks is always, we'll take it.
But you're welcome for a little over that.
Okay. Yeah, third item is the emergency services report by Corey, our sheriff, Corey Pulsifer.
Well, over the last month, we've responded to an additional nine calls, bringing the year-to-date total of 31 calls for search and rescue. And on this report, though, there's, uh, not all good news. Back on May 20, or March 29th, we responded to a hiker that collapsed up in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve due to a medical, um, emergency. EMS, high-angle teams responded, hiked up into where it was. CPR was already in progress with some people that were there along with them. Uh, the individual did not survive that, but we still had to do the extraction with ropes and ropes and all that stuff to bring him back out. Uh, they responded to an injured mountain biker up Stookie Springs. Female that had wrecked was actually unconscious. They had search and rescue, Santa Clara EMS, Gold Cross, St. George Fire, all trying to gain access, ended up using a Lifelight, well, no, not Lifelight, Mercy Air responded. Lifelight was unavailable to help us on that one. Uh, injured hiker in Lower San Cove where a female fell in the vortex, um, hiking up there. Um, Lifelight assisted on getting that individual out. Um, we responded to a climber stuck in Snow Canyon over by Johnson's Arch. It started down through that and there's about three, four rappels. Um, he got partway into it and realized he didn't have the proper equipment to go back out or to continue down there, about that 200-foot rappel. Uh, was smart enough to stay put till we could get there, rappelled him down, got him out, no medical needed on that one. We had a call to try and locate an individual that was lost, missing down in the Warner Valley. And he was down there checking on his cows and stuff, and one of the bulls had kind of gotten out, taken off, and so he was going after it to be able to get it back. And it's kind of funny, as his wife was with him in the UTV, she got a little bit disoriented, lost him, couldn't find anything. She found one of the trailheads, was able to call for assistance. He knew exactly where he was the entire time. He just didn't want to be bothered because he was taking care of his cows. So, uh, how many miles do you think he went?
Oh, it was a long way. Six miles?
Six, seven miles, each person actually, but he did hit the bull and then get it back over to the other place where the water and everything else was. And we was able to finally locate him, get him picked up, and he did appreciate the ride back over to where his truck and trailer were, that were stuck in the middle of the road, so. We do have some fun with some of these. Um, one of the other ones that was bad is we had individuals down here recreating from up north, 60-year-old male, had a medical condition while in the middle of a float tube type thing out on San Cove Reserve, or ended up falling into the water. Some of the witnesses there were able to help, um, bring him to shore. They did CPR and stuff, but the subject did not survive that one either. So we've had two fatalities that we've had to deal with. Um, we also had a subject that fell about 30 foot off the backside of Sand Mountain. I guess he just walked out on one of the edges to look and the edge gave way, fell down into what area they call the squeeze. We had to get people down there to help lift him out, and then Lifelight actually came and transported him as well. And then injured mountain biker, Green Valley Gap, and then another injured subject out on the West Desert Navajo Road. Um, I don't know what vehicle had some type of mechanical problem. Were you on that one? Um, front tire had come off, vehicle started going over the edge. He actually bailed out of the vehicle before the vehicle had go over the edge and stuff. So minor injuries and stuff, but, uh, we still had to, but he hurt his head and a few other things. But, uh, it's been kind of busy. Two of those calls were just on Sunday, so, with the warmer weather. Although I keep looking at the pictures that you posted of the snow coming down, and I figure someone's gonna go up to see how deep it is. We might be pulling somebody out of coal up today or tomorrow, so, unless it melted all off.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you of our search and rescue, ma'am.
All right, going to the fourth item is a, actually a public hearing. It's to consider appropriation of funds for a for-profit organization, specifically the Colorado City Music Festival. Um, I would like to note a few things on this is, even though it says Colorado City Music Festival, the event will actually occur in our county in Hildale. This did go to the Tourism Advisory Board. Uh, the organization came, made a presentation. The advisory board did make a recommendation of the funds to be provided at that time to this organization, they thought was a very positive thing. Um, the other thing that was noted is that this is a new event, and so they're in the process of probably changing to a nonprofit, but, uh, that took, takes some time and paperwork, and so that's their goal, to become a nonprofit, but at this time, they were still listed for profit, and that's one of the reasons why we have to have a public hearing. So at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to come and comment on this item and give feedback to the commissioners, I, at this time, I allow you to do that. Doesn't look like anybody's gonna jump up for the public hearing, so at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move to item number five, which is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2320, resolution approving the Tourism Advisory Board recommendations for funding the Colorado City Musical Festival. With that, I'd also like to note that the city of Hildale has, the mayor out there has given us a letter specifically requesting, um, this item to be fulfilled, and she also noted that this has been a very positive thing for their community out there. They've also provided a, a specific itemized list of what the funds would be going for, and they're all related to advertising and encourage people to come to the, this event, including those located outside our county.
Mr. Chairman, I see, uh, different amounts of money listed. Is there an easy total that they're asking for?
I believe it is $3,000.
$3,000.
$3,000. And they will only, so like, for example, on here, they have brochures and we have $250. They have to come back to the county with a receipt showing that that money was used for the brochures, and if it's less than that, they will, they will only receive the amount that they paid out. Okay. And so the, the Tourism Advisory Board felt that this is a, we, unique situation. This is an area that is, they're trying to encourage tourism to go to this area because of the positive, um, comments that we received from the city that they felt that this would be appropriate for funds to be used at this time for this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2018-2320, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board recommendations for funding of the Colorado City Music Festival. I wish them well.
I'll second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number six is consideration of ordinance number 2018-1114-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County and Central from RA-1, which is a residential agricultural one-acre minimum lot size zone to an RE-2.5 residential estate 2.5-acre minimum lot size zone hereafter, fully described in this ordinance.
Yeah, so, uh, the wall says own two parcels. Well, at the time that it went before the planning commission, it was two parcels of land, the total just, uh, three and a, just above three and a half acres in size. Um, what they were wanting to do is to do the, get a conditional use for the rural recreation ground and facilities. Um, it wasn't permitted in the zone that they were currently in, and so they needed to rezone it to a zone that would allow that as a conditional use. And to be able to meet the minimum lot size requirement for that zone, they needed to combine the two parcels that they have. And so the planning commission reviewed it last month and reckon, and we held the public hearing, and they reckon, the planning commission recommended approval of the zone change subject to those parcels being combined. And so that applicants, property owners have combined those properties. It's been recorded, and so now it's moving forward to the county commission with the recommendation of approval for the zone change. I'll answer any questions.
During the public comment portion, and probably, I assume, some notices had to go out.
Yes.
neighboring landowners that were within the statutory distance. Did you have any negative comments or responses back?
Uh, no, we did not receive any.
Okay. Is the applicant here today?
Yes, they are.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would make a motion in support of ordinance number 2018-114-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County in Central from RA-1 residential agricultural one-acre minimum lot size zone to the RE-2.5 residential estate 2.5-acre minimum lot size zone here and after, fully described in this ordinance, and that would be my motion in support of.
And I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2318, a resolution authorizing a quitclaim deed from Washington County to the Bureau of Land Management.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak for this.
Please.
Unless Eric was grabbing his mic.
I just have one, if you want to introduce it, then I have one thing to kind of fill in at the end.
Okay, I, uh, you know, it can come on people's radar that the county is transferring land to the BLM. I'd just like to give a little background on what that is and why the county is doing that. Uh, when the HCP was created in 1996, there were considerable private inholdings within our reserve, and one of the mechanisms of acquiring those inholdings is for the private landowners to exchange land, or BLM land outside of the reserve. In this particular instance, such a swap was arranged, but the owner of the inholdings also wanted to make a donation of some of his land. And the, uh, county stepped in to facilitate that donation, and by accepting that donation as a third-party entity, uh, the inholder gets his value-for-value exchange for land outside of the reserve, and by making a donation of his land to a third party, he also gets some tax benefit from that, which, uh, is a good inducement for him to make that donation that benefits all of the county's residents. And the county is taking that donated parcel and going to now give that to the Bureau of Land Management. And so, uh, this isn't really county land that is going to the BLM. I mean, it is, it's by way of our facilitation role in the HCP, and that land will now enjoy benefits of the MCA when it comes under federal ownership.
Commissioners, I just have one, one thing to add. Now, this, the land transfer that this donation occurred with happened some time ago, um, and we've had some people that work for the BLM have come and asked us, why isn't this transferred yet? So, we've been waiting for the BLM to finish their process before they'll accept the deed. They still haven't finished that up, but if you guys authorize this today, we, Cheyenne and I kind of tweaked the wording of the resolution a little bit, so that you'll authorize the execution of the quitclaim deed once the BLM finishes their process. So now, if anybody ever says, why isn't that done, the answer is always, as soon as you get, we've, we've done everything we can do.
We're waiting on you now.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, with that explanation, I would make a motion in support of resolution R-2018-2318, a resolution authorizing quitclaim deed from Washington County to the Bureau of Land Management on the donated land parcel.
I'll second that motion.
I'll, I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
It does seem more like we've talked about this.
Yeah.
Particular item.
Well, and I'd just like to point out that the amount of net private land in the county has actually increased because of this transaction.
Substantially.
Substantially, so this is, shouldn't be taken as the, the BLM getting more land in our county. There's actually more private land.
And, you know, on that exchange, Eric, you probably have the numbers, what that exchange of private inholdings was, Mr. Brennan is exchanging, but 600 acres, almost, of, uh, BLM land is now private, beyond the tax rolls, and this is a great win.
And it was approximately 100 acres that will go to the federal government.
So it's a 100 for 600 acre exchange. Thank you.
Right, number eight is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2319, a resolution approving a amendment to the agreement between Washington County and Utah Department of Natural Resources to provide rare plant services. And we have Cameron, a biologist, county biologist.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Cameron Rogan, HCP Administrator. Um, about a month ago, maybe even two months ago, you guys approved a contract with Division of Natural Resources, Utah Division of Natural Resources, for rare plant surveys and the proposed zone six, uh, for a possible expansion of the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. And this addendum to that agreement is to allow for the same group, uh, they're the most highly qualified, and we've already got a contract with them, to perform rare plant surveys in the proposed shooting range. And so I just wanted to be clear, though, that this addendum is not coming through the HCP. It's actually gonna go through the tourism funds. Um, I just helped facilitate the agreement since we already had agreement in place with the rare plant surveyors, so, um, I don't know the exact amount. You probably have it on there. It's...
Four thousand, 700, four thousand, 800.
Yeah, just under $5,000, so that's gonna come through the tourism department.
And this is to do the survey to then ask the Fish and Wildlife to adjust the line, the boundary, um...
It's for the approval or potential approval of the shooting range to see if it's gonna be feasible to place the shooting range in that location.
And it may not move the line, haven't decided that.
Yeah.
It could maybe deal with, with an interlocal or, but we, we need to know what's there.
Yeah. This is good.
Yeah, and we've already completed the, the tortoise work, and I think BLM will be doing other NIPA work on the archaeology as well.
What do you think timeframe is on this?
Uh, immediately. They're out there already looking for plants.
Oh, very good.
Yeah.
Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm excited to make a motion that we approve resolution R-2018-2319, a resolution approving amendment to an agreement between Washington County and Utah Department of Natural Resources to provide rare plant surveys.
And I'll second.
Motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number nine is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2321, a resolution appointing board members to the Washington County Planning Commission. Scott?
So, in, in the county code, we have, it's set up in the formation of the planning commission that we have, uh, regular members and alternate members, and we've really taken advantage of having alternate members over the last two years, and it has really helped out in, um, as people have moved or as vacancies have been created on the planning commission. Kurt Miller, who is been a great planning commission member, he, um, because of his work, is away, has to be away, and called me and said that he didn't feel like he'd be able to serve in the capacity that he should be able to devote to this. And so, in, in our discussion, it was decided that we would, because of his expertise in engineering, that it would be nice to have him in the future when things do slow down for him, and he has a desire to serve, continue to serve on the planning commission in that way. So what, uh, this ordinance proposes is to make Shane Durant, who is currently an alternate member, move him into a regular member position, and move Kurt Miller, who is currently the regular member, to the alternate member position.
Okay. Uh, I would make a motion in support of, uh, resolution R-2018-2021, that would appoint Shane Durant, uh, as a regular planning commission member with term to expire January 31, 2021, and Kurt Miller, appoint him as an alternate with a term to expire January 31, 2020.
And I'll, I'll second that motion.
Motion as second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I will say, I, I think our planning commission is really good.
Yeah.
We have some good competent people. We have some good competent people who work very hard and do great jobs, so.
Yeah, pleased with them and they're great to work with.
I appreciate what you're doing, Scott, uh in keeping everything uh professional and all ran and managed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Item number ten, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty three twenty two. A resolution approving a software development agreement between Washington County and BCBB Inc. Or the Washington County Emergency Operations Center. And Pete?
Get this to come up and show you a little bit about what we're talking about. Yeah, if you look behind you, what uh the Southwest Region has purchased software program called Web EOC, which allows us to improve situational awareness within the emergency operations centers in the five counties in the Southwest Region. In addition to that, it allows us to do some emergency management virtually, so you and your offices can watch what's going on. What's happening on the board is, is an example of some of the boards that are present in that. That particular one's a hospital status board that allows us to see what's going on in all the hospitals in the region. We have a shelter status board that lets us know what shelters are open and what's functioning. This one is a uh common operating picture, so in an event, the little circles indicate something that's transpired. It allows us to be able to input information that comes in regarding incidents that are happening, share that information within the EOC and even outside the EOC to those who have access to that. Uh one of the challenges with this, we bought the package deal as a region. Um there are some additional boards and additional things we would like the system to do. And uh what we're trying to do is to contract with the BCBB, who we've done software development. They've worked with both us, the county attorney's office. Do that, build additional boards and to kind of tweak systems where we need those tweak to make things work the way we'd like them.
So this is an agreement uh that you're entering in with BCBB. And if I'm remembering right, uh the county has uh worked with BCBB in other web based software, particularly our AutoCAD and Spillman System.
AutoCAD, Spillman System, they've done some individual stuff for us in the Emergency Operations Center. Uh volunteer check-in systems and things of that. It's a company we've done business with or has the knowledge to be able to do this without stressing the current IT resources that don't specialize in this type of.
And when I say CAD, that's computer assisted dispatching. It's, it's a little different than the computer assisted design that a lot of people might be thinking of. And you're in support of this?
Yes, and it'll come out of regional funds.
Okay. Mister Chairman, I'd make a motion in support of resolution R two thousand eighteen twenty three twenty two. A resolution approving a software development agreement between Washington County and B Inc. For the Washington County Emergency Operations Center.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion as second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Um come to item uh number eleven, Commissioner's Report. Anything to?
Well, we've done some uh roads department and coordination with the Shooting Sports Park has uh improved quite a bit out there at the practical range. They've added a bunch of uh bays and had some great, great stuff going on now.
And this next week, uh for, in about a week, at the Utah Association of Counties is going to be uh meeting down here and it's always an important venue and opportunity for us to meet with our peers throughout the state and to learn from them and to collaborate with them on best practices and common, common issues that we all face.
Is that a warning telling everybody there's going to be a bunch of politicians in town?
Lot of hot air, so get your air conditioners.
Well, we're doing it kind of in conjunction with the League of Cities and Towns. They're coming in the days after us, so it's going to be, it's going to be a week full of that, yeah.
Okay. Well, I look forward to it.
Yeah, it'll be good. Always good to collaborate with the cities.
All right.
Seeing no other item, at this time I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.